Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The April 26th Economic Growth and Development Committee meeting. First thing to do is call the meeting to order and ask for a resolution to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Mr. David, Mr. Leggett, thank you very much. Revisions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved and passed. What we're going to do is start with our update from the leader of our economic development corporation, Jim Siplin. So Jim, I'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you Supervisor Wild. It's good to see you all again and in our new, our new digs here. It feels a little more intimate. I just wanted to provide a general update and highlight some of the activities to make sure they're on your calendar that may be of note to you. I did bring a paper copy for anybody that's here of a chart that shows some of the economic activity in the county. I'll share that with Samantha and we could get that out to any committee members. But we're tracking business activity slightly differently this year than we have in the past. Any activity that's older than 90 days, I'm kind of keeping in a separate status, which means that the project is open, but I don't necessarily want us to be overly analyzing stuff that maybe people just haven't gotten around to tell us that they're no longer interested in. So for this year, we have 25 business inquiries that are active that have been raised this year. They're roughly split between the outer county and what I call the Glens Falls Queensberry corridor. So there's 13 in the Glens Falls Queensberry corridor and 12 in the outer county. That's an important number to us because it's, it's something we strive for to make sure that we're supporting and encouraging business that's uniform. The, what's also interesting about those is the majority of them are expansions of existing businesses. More than 60% of those business inquiries are existing businesses that are looking to grow or looking for specific support in order to sustain the business that they have. Increasingly, that's about workforce. And I'm sure you're going to hear more about that from Liza. That's an important thing for all of us to understand. The majority of the business inquiries we get are not about establishing something new. They're about how to either grow something we have or keep something that we have. That really has changed the agenda for the EDC. We certainly welcome any new business opportunity, but the majority of the work is really about trying to make sure that we're able to sustain the business environment that we already have. Liza will share with you, I'm sure, some insight to the current employment data, but it's significant, the number of open jobs that exist in our current economy. That's driving a lot of our activity. So when we get engaged in supporting, for instance, infrastructure, and there's a couple of key infrastructure projects that we're attempting across the county to support from an economic standpoint, it's usually because that's fundamental to these efforts to sustain or grow existing businesses. I give you an example, in North Creek where, you know, there, there's an opportunity to potentially develop the sewer and wastewater treatment system for the first time in that community's history. There are a number of economic projects that would be unleashed with that decision. Not the least of which is the $25 million that the state has pledged to expand Orta's facilities at the base of the skeevall. But there are several others. And so our object is to try to make sure that we're keeping pace. Same is true with ongoing broadband efforts. Over the last two years, we focused very much on trying to extend broadband to those in the community that did not have it. And we've been, I think reasonably successful. We have one of the highest access rates in northern New York for our residents in Warren County, and we continue to make regular progress. We're now down to several hundred addresses in Warren County that do not meet a modern broadband standard, but the work is not done. We learned that in this most recent winter storm that we had. We found out that big chunks of our county you live in won, not only lost power, but they lost connectivity. And that has a lot to do with the way that broadband has been patchworked out across the community, cellular as well. A single power outage can imperil one or both, and a broadband outage oftentimes is not resolved even when the power is restored. So we're working to try to harmonize these things. One of those things that would help is to increase competition so that we have more carriers and more routes. That's a big part, what I would consider to be the second chapter in our broadband work, is to create the opportunity for robustness in the network that we've been able to build in Warren County. We also have come to realize that our neighbors depend on us. The broadband connections that were created in the last two years are the mid-mile that go to, goes to places like Essex County and beyond. And without those, they themselves might have been cut off. And they were able to restore services in some cases faster, and they were able to keep connectivity sometimes even when they didn't have power because of broadband connections that had been built in Warren County. And obviously, we stand to benefit from that robustness as it develops on the borders around us. The reason I share all that with you is people might wonder, why do we spend so much time trying to help our neighbors accomplish what we've already accomplished? And that's because we learn in times like that, that that network doesn't know the difference between Warren County and Essex County. That, that network is essential to us being able to provide essential services and keep people connected in our greater community. And I do feel like we were in a better place than we could have been, and I think we've learned a lot in it that we can improve from. One last thing that I wanted to cover is in this, this breakdown of business activity. In, in the Queensberry corridor, there's a number of well-known business expansions. They've been publicly announced, so I don't have any problem talking about them. But they all, they all kind of move around that exit 18 corridor. So for instance, 80K Winery is closing up their expansion. Brookfield has broke ground and will later this year have a facility that's three times as large as the one that they had with as, as many as 50 new people. Kirsch Helmets continues to grow. They're on the other side of exit 18. Hacker Boat continues to grow its operation. Birch Bottling in the old web graphics building. If you look at the building that's out on Native Drive, the old native textiles building, there is a proposal to expand that building by as much as 100% of its current floor space because there's demand for that kind of business. The, the sewer and water infrastructure that was put in is, is a big enabler for this. But I do think it's something we need to register on the radar. This level of growth on that single corridor, I think, suggests that we may want to look at what are the, the larger implications in terms of traffic, in terms of potential changes we want to make? And we're going to inject some of that thought into the process that Queensberry is going through as they evaluate an update to their community development plan. But it is also important to share with the rest of the county that this, there's good news when these businesses expand, but oftentimes it's a net new business that triggers us to want to look at things like traffic. It's not necessarily the expansion of existing businesses. And this shift in our business activity being driven largely by expansions means that we also have to kind of adapt our processes to keep tabs of these things even when something net new hasn't shown up. I don't see any crisis here. I just want to get it on our, our collective radar screens. I'd also like to mention just a couple of other investment areas of our time and resources. We're deeply involved in a number of housing efforts. They're largely around exploring what options exist for us. Some of those we're doing in conjunction with the LDC and some of which we're doing just on our own as the EDC. There are some great ideas that are being generated sometimes by people in this room and sometimes by many others. And there are other ideas that may not be right. I think we're finding, for instance, that a land bank may not be the right answer for us. It, it may take too long and it may not be able to provide any kind of support at scale that would really help us solve at least the problem of capacity. But that, there are other programs that we need to explore, like can we help developers de-risk the front-end process of proposing things? And can we harmonize some of the comprehensive land use plans that exist in some of our communities to at least encourage proposals? Along those lines, there are specific soft infrastructure areas that we're also investing time in. I think Liza may talk to you a lot about childcare. That's something we'd like to figure out how we can best support. We don't need to lead it. We need to figure out how we can help fill the gaps as it's being developed. One of those areas may be helping new childcare entities as we initiate them with the resources they need to be able to sustain their business. How can they get the business expertise they need? How can they get the ongoing need to work in capital so that we don't bring a lot of new entrants into the market and then wind up not having them a year or two from now? That's just an idea that we're starting to beat around, but I wanted to make sure you knew it was part of the slate that we're working on. I've talked to you before about something called the demographic drought, which is, I think, one of the best research pieces I've seen that talk about some of these underlying trends that are driving some of this behavior. I, I've done some research beyond the demographic drought, and we're having the author of the demographic drought come and speak to the EDC annual luncheon, which will be later in June. I've got some flyers here I can leave with you that we can post so everyone's able to see that here even if they're not in this meeting. But one of the things that this piece points out is that we have been under-investing in housing stock for more than 50 years. For more than 50 years, the birth rate in the United States, and indeed this is true in New York and it's certainly true here in Warren County, has not kept pace with the loss that we have in terms of death rate. In other words, our replacement value of our population has not been there for 50 years. So you might think, well then, that shouldn't suggest we would have a housing crisis. But one of the things that's also happened in that same 50-year period is that household sizes have almost been cut in half. During the 1960s, the average household size in upstate New York was between five and six individuals. The vast majority of those households had people under the age of 18. Today, less than 40% of the households in Warren County have someone under the age of 18, and the average household size is approaching two. So what that means is our existing housing stock is half as dense as it once was. This helps people understand why can we need more housing if our population has stayed relatively flat? And nothing is going to change these trends. These trends have been developing for 50 years. Even if we were to undertake any kind of social actions that might encourage a increase in the birth rate, it would take generations for that to manifest. So we are now in a position where the existing housing stock is supporting half the people that it once did. This is not unique to us, but whether we step into it more effectively than our other neighbors will help us figure out whether we're able to sustain our economy going forward. I say this because I'm going to go speak later next week out in North Creek and we'll speak to anyone who will have us, any town that will have us, any school board that will have us, any business that will have us, to educate people about these trends because I think it helps them understand why is intervention needed? If we do nothing, we will continue to grow, I mean, to not be able to grow, not because we don't want to, not because our economic incentives are failing us, not even because there isn't demand, because it's just because there simply isn't any place for the people that are needed in order to fuel that growth or even the sustainment of our existing business base if we do not create more housing stock. And that's going to drive an awful lot of our activity. But before we get too far ahead of that, I think we really owe the community an opportunity to learn some of the same things that we've been bathed in for the last year. And that's the basis of our, our upcoming meeting. I'm glad that we're going to get together in person for the first time in three years. It will be wonderful to see so many people that we haven't seen. It'll be at the same place we've always had it, which is at the Great Escape, the biggest room we can find. But the message is what's really important, and the message is not mine. I'm just happen to be somebody who is trumpeting something that we all need to learn, which is that this underlying population trend that affects our workforce, that affects our housing, that affects our business community, it will affect our tax base. It will affect every aspect of public and community life. We got to spend some time making sure everyone has an opportunity to catch up to it. So that's what we're going to do on June 17th. I'll leave those flyers with you. I'm not sure if there are any other questions, but that's our update for the month.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions or comments from committee members? Supervisor Leggett, if I could put you on the spot. There might be others that are listening today that don't really understand the implications of a land bank and what we were considering. And I know you've been involved in that quite a bit, at least in the recent times. Can you give a, just a brief summary for some that may not have heard?
Sure, sure. Land banks are something that are approved for entities that can foreclose on properties. That would be the county. And it would be a method of being able to take appropriate properties out of the foreclosure process and divert them into reuse through a strategic program of getting housing back into the communities. And there's, it can either be from single-family residences or to vacant land and making that available to residential development. And there was, because there are limited number of banks authorized by the state, and nine remain open for the taking, for the application. We have gotten involved with a discussion through Adirondack Action and ANCA of looking at a regional one for the Adirondacks. And a meeting we just had earlier, where are we now? It was the end of last week, I guess it was, that there, Clinton County is going on their own, Essex County is going on their own. So there is not the geographic continuity to go with a regional one. And if anything, the county should look on its own for going for its own land bank. But as President Siplin had said, this is something that does take more time and more resources. So it's not an immediate fix to our problem, but it is a tool that if we do implement something of the sort, could be used upon time. One of the things that came out of the discussion last week with the Land Bank Steering Committee was the idea of partnerships. And this was brought up by President Siplin. You take an organization, something like Habitat for Humanity, who has, has a long track record and a program for getting people into housing at an affordable price, perhaps working partnerships within the, the county through the IDA, the LDCs, the, and county planning and other, you know, this committee itself of directing energy and resources could pull to get their, one of the ways to address our housing issue and make best use of the housing stock we have and the potential infill there is.
Supervisor Leggett, any questions, comments? We have that, I, I've heard before about economic development being a three-legged stool. Used to be something like our existing businesses, making sure they're successful, helping them grow. I can't remember what the third one was, but now it's housing, childcare and transportation. And that's what we're after, right? Because that's the big needs we have. So I'm looking forward to everybody's efforts in moving forward on all of those. So Mr. Siplin, thank you very much for giving us a brief update. And I look forward to us working together again in the future. Thanks. So along those lines, Liza, you have a resolution on your agenda today. So I, I think that trumps our planning agenda, but I think it's more important. I just don't want to lose everyone so that we can get a quorum and, and make sure that we can get this approved. So if you don't mind, I'm going to turn it over to you. And I apologize to our planning staff. I'll make it up to you next month.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. I do have just one resolution request in front of you today. And that is to, for our new contract with BOSI's for our operation Food Chain, which is part of our summer youth employment program. And I'm happy to share some more updates once this is on the floor.
So do we have a motion to bring this to the floor? Supervisor Leggett, Supervisor David, thank you very much. It's on the floor. Any comments, discussions? Summer Youth Program?
And this is for the 15,000, 536.
I believe so.
And, you know, I did have one thing here on, and as for the two months this summer, on the page seven there, academic component that's based on this, career exploration of the hospitality field. But I was wondering about ag production too, because part of this is gleaning, isn't it?
Absolutely. We are looking at other ways to continue to enhance the summer youth employment program. We are required to do additional career exploration work with them. Currently, a lot of our summer youth employees are placed at municipalities as well as hospitality because they do need more hands-on supervision rather than some of the other summer jobs. But I'm definitely open to hearing about other resources or opportunities that we, around agriculture that we could share with our summer youth. And I did just want to give a couple of updates about what's different in this year's contract compared to last year's contract, if that's okay.
Please do.
Sure. So as a reminder, this is all $10 that goes through DSS and then, and then is funneled to my department. And it is a little bit more this year because of gas prices, of course. And the other thing that is updated and different is that in the past, when many of you have attended our celebration picnic, the award ceremony, the youth who participate in Operation Food Chain are also the ones who are preparing and serving the food. So they haven't really been able to enjoy their own awards celebration. So what's different this year is that we're actually going to have that event catered instead of the youth preparing the food. And that's why you'll see that on the breakdown of the itemized costs for that contract with BOSI's. And I just wanted you to be aware of those, those minor updates. We also weren't sure if we need to, if gratuity is included in that or if we need to add that on the contract. So your feedback on that is appreciated.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts about gratuity? What do you suggest, Liza?
Well, if we need to, I mean, we've budgeted $1,200 for the end of the year picnic, the award ceremony, which usually, you know, we, we try to feed up to 75 people who attend. So gratuity could be a part of that, but we didn't know if we need to outline it explicitly for payment.
Do we need to know today? Do we push this off until later in the year and see if maybe some of the hospitality organizations that are involved might want to help contribute to this?
Well, Chairman, either way, the, the instructor for the Operation Food Chain, this, this contract covers, you know, his salary as well, which is why we hope to have this passed today. But we are open to other options for the picnic, of course, and, and we don't have to decide that today. I just didn't know if the language mattered around gratuity. BOSI's called me yesterday, just wondering about that. But I don't think it's a big concern. I just wanted to make sure that the committee was okay with it.
Yes.
So the $1,200 that's for the other costs under item four, that's already been let as a, as a
It's a current budget, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Liza?
Yes.
So was that based on a bid or a quote or just an allotment?
Um, it was, it was an estimate. Yeah, we've checked with a few different providers, caterers. So it was an estimate for up to 75 people.
Is there any more money in the tamp? To add on?
That's up to Liza.
We, we will get our TANF allocation. It usually comes in May, or at least, and it's usually between, you know, $90,000 and $120,000. Could be this year, more this year. We rarely spend it all, which is why we have also increased our youth salaries or hourly rate to $15 because some youth chose to take other jobs last summer that paid more. So we do want to be more competitive this year. But we do have wiggle room in the TANF budget. But we also, you know, try to be mindful and good stewards of the resources.
Any suggestions from the committee?
No, if we know more for the end of, end of the season, we can take care of it in the next couple of months.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
So with that in mind, and I have to apologize to Supervisors Strauss and Hogan. I don't always look at the screen, so if you have any comments, please don't hesitate to jump in. But hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to be call a vote. All those in favor of supporting this resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, Supervisor Hogan, was that an aye?
Yes, it was. I support this program 100%.
Thank you very much. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion is passed. Liza, any other updates?
Yes, thank you so much. So in addition to the 15-hour wage increase for our summer youth workers, by the way, again, that's, that's an income-eligible program. That deadline is this week. So thanks to Don Lehman, we'll continue to push that out to make sure we get some more applicants. So far, we have about 30 applicants from around the county and many returning work sites as well as a few work sites. We also love working with our municipalities. And that's free labor for these businesses and municipalities since we pay their salaries. So we're very, it will be a busy season, but we're very excited about our, our summer youth employment program application process so far. I did want the committee to know that our March unemployment rate is still very low at about 4%. We're also gearing up, of course, for the tourism season. So the, the bike share program, the bikes are going to be heading, going to be out in our county again in the next week or so. They were updated with some new technology. Our goal is that more community members are going to be using our bikes for commuting to work and that more businesses will be using it as an incentive for their employees, but also for their guests. We know we had over 1,100 riders last season, but that was mainly tourists. And so we'll be working on some marketing efforts to make sure that our local residents know how to use the bike system for commuting to work or for errands. We're very excited about that as well. As many of you know, we're working on childcare barriers. And I heard from Congresswoman Stefanik's office that we will be notified in May of a meeting that will happen early June to go over how we are receiving in the grant requirements or the earmark requirements for the $205,000. And then we will start marketing that heavily and recruiting for folks who want to be a part of that program. We also want to supplement that with private business donations, and that is one of the things that we'll be discussing at the LDC meeting in May. Lynn Sickles from Southern Adirondack Childcare Network will be attending with me and will be discussing workforce and childcare and how we continue, can, can continue to partner with the business community. Our Workforce Development Board is planning a truck rodeo for the fall in September, and that is going to help recruit more CBL drivers. We're very excited about that, and I'll keep you posted on that because we may need help with promoting that and getting more attendance there and partners. I continue to work closely with our count, other county departments. So DSS, we have now over 10 work sites across our county for people in our community who struggle with barriers to employment. We're working with DSS to make sure that they get work experience. And many of our local municipalities and organizations have offered to be a work site. So that's fantastic. And working closely with the Sheriff's Department and Corrections as well. We're still doing virtual workshops with inmates. And we're also helping to continue to help promote their corrections officers' jobs as well as other county positions. Those are my main updates. I did also, this is an important day in history because Don Lehman was born today. And I just wanted to publicly wish him a happy birthday because he does so much for promoting our training and employment opportunities for our residents. I just really wanted to embarrass him publicly. So that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good job, Liza. I, I do have one question. What's the status of our job openings?
Yeah, so it's April. So usually in the summer, we have up to 3,000 jobs. I've been trying to get updates about J1 workers because that will determine a lot, right? About how many open jobs we're going to have. Normally, we have 1,000 J1 workers and some of them will take more than one job, which is critical for our tourism and hospitality community. So what I'm hearing, but it's not anything formal, but what I'm hearing is that the Eastern European countries are having more challenges with getting J1 workers here. So it is going to be really important that we continue to recruit local residents and regional residents for our tourism and hospitality jobs. Because at any given moment in, I mean, in the, in the spring and winter, we normally have anywhere Anywhere uh around a a thousand jobs or fifteen hundred jobs, and then in the summer, it's usually around three thousand jobs. So um, as as Mr. Siflon always shares, we always have. So many healthcare jobs open, uh hundreds, and then um definitely tourism and hospitality are big. This is going to be a really busy season again. For tourism and hospitality. People are traveling more this summer than previous summers, but we know we'll have a lot of returning um guests too. So we will have likely, um, I would estimate. Two thousand jobs to fill. Um, there are businesses who are making progress with hiring right now. And we continue to target the populations that are not in the workforce, right? Our teenagers or people with disabilities, um, somebody who has a criminal record. Uh, an active senior who can still work part-time. We have to rely on those people who are not in the workforce. Um, if we are not going to have all of our our J-one workers. And then in May, um, at our May committee meeting, I will share some more long-term initiatives to reflect um the concerns that Mr. Siflon shared about the demographic drought.
Any other questions from any of the committee meetings, members? Seeing none. Liza, I, and just to help convey some of the information I've heard, I'm not sure if it was from you or from Jim. Uh, but I I heard that we had like sixteen hundred job openings. And that forty percent were uh of that number was basically professionals. Uh, the majority of that coming from healthcare industries. Um, and that. But the impediment to filling those jobs, which is important for all our residents. Uh, is housing, if I'm not mistaken.
You are correct.
Nodding your head, maybe if you and Jim have any comments to add to that, but I thought that was striking. Uh, and it's important to be able to fill those jobs. To not only deal with uh our normal year and our normal residents, but when we have tourists coming here. In the summertime and in the wintertime, hopefully more of those. Uh, that the ability to provide healthcare is one of the things that we need to consider is being very important for us.
Which is why we need to uh, I'm sorry, Chairman, go ahead.
No, go right ahead.
Uh, which is why we need to keep our talent as well, keep our young people here. Um, and 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 we'll share more, some more plans and initiatives about how we hope to do that. Um, to grow our workforce, uh, to fill some of those in-demand ish industries like healthcare and manufacturing, um, construction and hospitality and tourism.
Yeah, we talk all the time, Liza and I, uh, you, we can't, either one of us could not accomplish our job without. Working together and, you know, we're so well-served by her and her team in this county, uh, you know, she's on top of all of this. Um, in a way that I think it's hard to describe in in these kind of committee meetings, but. Uh, I will say one thing that's really clear is that the, you know, the the drum beats forever in her office. There's always a need to fill jobs for different employers. I think one of the things that we try to help is is give people some uh perspective, especially on the strategic. Sometimes there's a perception that we're in the middle of a housing bubble. And from a pricing standpoint, it can feel like that. There's demand for people who want second homes. That's always existed here in the North Country. There's demand for people who are trying to move away from the effects of climate change. That's a fairly new phenomenon. But here's what's not gonna change. There's just not enough people to staff our hospital. There's just not enough people to staff our public institutions. Anybody who's running a town knows it's a struggle to find people to be your EMS, you know, drivers or to be the volunteers in your community. And the single biggest thing that's happening there isn't that people don't want to be here. We're one of the. Few places in upstate New York that's experiencing population growth, at least parts of Warren County are experiencing that. Um, but what's throttling it is that there isn't any place for somebody to live.
Any other comments? Thank you, Jim and Liza. Uh, let's move on to our planning team. Sarah, Ethan, I'm not sure which one wants to go first, but uh I'll let you guys work that out.
I will uh give you a couple of quick updates on our ongoing initiatives. Um, you know, first and most importantly for the county is the comprehensive plan that we received. Allocation for, to develop the request for proposals for that, uh, that's been drafted. Um, we've looked at that, we're gonna. Right now, uh, try to couple that with the Outdoor Recreation Economy Strategic Plan. That originally was a grant that we got awarded uh last year for an eighty to a hundred thousand dollar project. A lot of that Outdoor Recreation Economy Strategic Plan is a mouthful, uh, but it involves public engagement, uh, stakeholder groups. So we're thinking there might be an opportunity to get um the comprehensive plan and the Outdoor Recreation Economy Strategic Plan done at the same time, so it might have a prime consultant for the comprehensive plan. For the sub-con consultant managing the Outdoor Recreation Economy Plan, um, and that way we don't have too much redundancy with public outreach, so. Once we get the details of that worked out, we're gonna release both those RFPs at once. Um, in the housing study, RFP is also in development. Um, so that's that right there. If anyone has any questions, reach out anytime to us. Um, we are gonna be circulating some of the materials as we receive it, though. Um, then just a quick update, uh, another grant that we won, the Screen Lake Aquatic Basin Species Initiative. Right now, that's under DOS review. That's gonna be a comprehensive initiative to deal with aquatic species, testing out new technology, uh, very important to our up-county supervisors. Um, and that's under review by Department of State. They're expediting contract review, which is good. Uh, it's a lot of money for us. Um, you know, Climate Task Force is doing some other uh initiatives, a fleet inventory, uh, well, actually, a a conversion to electric vehicles. We're trying to understand the feasibility of that. Uh, we're continuing to do a municipal center uh energy audit with Department of Building and Grounds. Um, and the organics management plan that we got funding for is uh. Tom from the uh Department of Public Works is work with Department of Environmental Conservation on that, so we're in good standing with the Climate Smart Communities Program right now, which is important because. Uh, that will allow us to request additional funding for any sort of projects that we might want to do this year as well. Um. Liza touched on the Bike Share Program. On that same vein, um, we got. A slot to do a complete streets training session. Uh, through NYSERTA, they have hired a few consultants to go around different communities and do a ninety-minute webinar on. Hey, how do we make our transportation networks okay for people that are walking, biking, uh differently abled? This is important from a workforce development standpoint. Hey, how do we get people with these lower-paid jobs that might not own a private automobile back and forth to work? Um, it's also economic development. Um, how do we attract new residents here? Really high quality of life, things like multi-use trails. Uh, bike facilities, those are very big. Um, we're competing with a lot of other areas. Uh, for this sort of um, these sort of lifestyle amenities. So in Warren County, if our communities are sort of building these things out. We're gonna be able to attract more people and thereby more business activity. Um, so that webinar is gonna be on the eighth or ninth, so I'd like to get elected officials, um. Uh, planning board chairs and anyone from uh DPWs that's responsible for, you know, the construction maintenance of transportation networks. Uh, that's June eighth or ninth, uh, sometime in the afternoon. I could, I will send out more information on that. Um, you know, Wayne and I have been doing a lot of uh grant closeouts, uh, with the rest of our staff, the First Wilderness Heritage Corridor Program. And some other aquatic invasive species programs. Um, we're engaged with ARPA. Um, right now, we're finishing up quarterly reporting to just basically, um, you know, let the the US Treasury Department understand where that money's been allocated to. Um. And then also, we submitted a uh letter of interest to the Northern Borders uh Regional Commission. This is the federal organization, economic development organization that. Uh, addresses all of the border states. Um, Warren County is one of the counties that's eligible for money. Uh, I put a letter of interest in for a two hundred thousand dollar study of our multi-use trails. Basically. Uh, we sit on the edge of what Outdoor Magazine ranked the number one rail trail in the US, which is the Empire State Trail going from New York City. Up Canada and then up to to Buffalo. Uh, conceivably, we could get from the shores of Lake George, um, and Lake George Village through the city of Glens Falls. Uh, to Peter Canalway Trail, Hudson Falls, and then to Empire State Trail, which has a lot of visitation. Uh, there's a few modernization and safety upgrades that we need to make. I know the bike trail has been a point of discussion lately. Uh. Some modernization and safety improvements to those things. So if we get this letter of interest accepted, uh, we'll know, I think, the first week of May, and then the application we do early June. So that would be a good uh county initiative. It would benefit multiple communities along the way. Um. The other thing, I guess, I don't want to bore you to death with all this stuff, but the budget did pass and it, the state budget. Um, there's a hundred million dollar increase in the Environmental Protection Fund. Uh. That's the pot of money that we use for things like aquatic invasive species, uh, a lot of comprehensive planning, other, you know. The whole First Wilderness Heritage Corridor, uh, watershed management plans, all this stuff was coming through the Environmental Protection Fund historically. Um, that's hovered around three hundred million dollars, four hundred million dollars this year, so. Uh, the takeaway from that is that we should all be taking a look at our comprehensive plans, uh, looking at what's going on in our communities and figuring out what priorities are, because. Then the next month or two, there is gonna be a whole slew of grant opportunities announced, and we want to be well-positioned to take advantage of those. Um, that's, hey, what are the good projects? Um, and then talking to, you know, on the local level, the different boards about. Hey, let's set aside some matching funds now. Have that conversation before the grant applications do, and everyone's scrambling. Um, and so our department can help, uh, you know, identify what those projects are and sort of massage them into something that's fundable, but well, once we hear. What is available, we can, you know, go from there. Well, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Leggett, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the process for identifying those projects would then be how? You know, through this committee, through?
I think it would probably start uh on the local level, and Sarah's gonna talk about updates to the comprehensive improvement, our uh capital improvement plan. A second, um, but on the local level, I think it's like, hey, look at your existing, you know, planning documents. You know, the important thing to say like, hey. As a, this is on the local level, not necessarily the county level, like, hey, do we have a document that outlines what our priorities and goals are? If you have that document, uh, start saying, hey, which one's relevant right now? Um, and then once you have some idea about that, then it's like, all right, we can target a funding source for that. Um, the really, the hardest part of this whole thing is figuring out a project description. As with any grant writing. Um, but we can definitely help with identification and anything like that, but I would talk to your uh constituents on that one.
You're welcome. I, you know, I think one of the things that's important. Um, Wayne and his team are very busy. They have a lot of things that are currently occupying their times. And um, you know, it seems like Ethan wants to do even more, so you know, we can have, I think he's salaried, so we can work here twelve, twenty hours a day. It's not a problem. But we need to be respectful of the fact that we may not have that ability, but there are opportunities, and Ethan shared it with me yesterday, that. Um, we can offer some assistance to the towns. Um, but we can't really go through all the work like we may have done in the past to help make those things happen. So um, I think it's important to recognize that, but there are, there is money available, and there is some help that we can provide. So I'm not sure how, Ethan, if you want to. Make sure every town knows about this?
Yeah, yeah, I think we could probably send out a communication, and as and once the the grants are announced and the requests for applications go out, then I think we should send out a more um. Focused message to our communities.
Just giving everyone a heads up, I think would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that's huge. And then just the other thing with that budget too, is the Restore Mother Nature Bond Act is huge. Uh, that's gonna be on the referendum in November, uh, and that's gonna be for a lot of. Uh, resiliency, you know, environmental regeneration projects, um. Infrastructure, um, that is gonna be a big pot of money that we should be thinking about as well as we look at community plans and develop priorities. That's gonna be another just big dump of money. Um, so I think that's it for now. Um. You know, we still are trying to hire a senior planner. Um, we sent the job posting out to a few different industry publications. Uh, and didn't think we'd get any applicants on that one. Um. But we'll see where that goes. And then to the grant conversation, Sarah can talk about the capital improvement plan that y'all like to. Update.
Thank you, Ethan. Any other questions for Ethan? Go ahead.
The, you mentioned the trails and looking up at the trails from New York City to Buffalo to Canadian border and.
Yeah.
The uh compatibility, are there any issues as it relates to motorized vehicles uh with with these trail systems?
Uh. In terms of uh keeping things like ATVs off?
Yeah, yeah, is there any prohibition? So I.
I think most, most of it is, they're not allowed to have more vehicles on there for the most part. Um, and then one of the ideas behind it is like, hey, the more people you have using these trails, the fewer. People you're gonna have breaking the rules, right? The people don't throw garbage and there's other people watching. Um, the whole e-bike thing uh is a different conversation, but.
It's a different committee.
Yeah, different committee.
So, so would e-bikes, e-bikes, I, I, I guess are so new, I guess, in terms of.
Yeah, I think they set some regular, it's like type one and two, I believe, are okay, but that might vary by municipality and individual jurisdiction. Um, but in terms of the grant, the Northern Borders Grant that I did mention, we put the letter of interest in for. Uh, if you compare some of our existing multi-use trail facilities to some of the national standards, whether it's Ashto. Or even something like Empire State Trail, you'd see that widening it to a minimum of ten to twelve feet would be advisable considering the volume of traffic and potential for. Uh, pedestrian cyclist conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Sarah, can we move forward?
All right, so just following up. Ethan's. Anyway, um, capital project update, so it is time for annual update of the capital project inventory, so I handed those. Project sheets for your municipality. Um. You can write on the sheets and hand them back to me, or you can email me updates. Uh, if you have a new project, there's a link there, and I also gave you a sheet with that link to submit new projects. Um, and then you can review all the current projects for your own municipality, as well as all the other towns in the county. Um, and refresh your memories on the criteria for these projects. Um, at that website that's linked. Uh, and as Ethan mentioned, this is very useful for us as we are getting information for. The consolidated funding application, uh, uh, grant applications that will be due this summer. This helps give, give us a good idea as to. What the needs are in each of the municipalities kind of ahead of time, so that we're able to match things up as that. Um, grant funding information becomes available. So feel free to send me an email or give me a call if you have any questions. Um. All right, so I'm just gonna spend a few minutes talking about uh some other projects that we're working on. As Ethan mentioned, uh, we got. Grant for Screen Lake. Um. Mill foil data collection. So last summer, as many of you know, we implemented a new program to have the divers collect mill foil. Collection or how much mill foil they were collecting real time in the field that. Was displayed on an online dashboard, so that anybody who is interested could see how much mill foil was being collected um at the time.
Can you close?
I know, I have this.
Window.
It, it's not displayed on my screen, so I don't, I'm not exactly sure how to get. Rid of it, because I don't see it on my screen. I don't know if.
You'll see that.
Small minimize button, yeah, there it is.
There, okay.
That should be better anyway.
Yeah, much better, thank you. Um, so we will be working with both Brant and Screen Lakes this summer to implement the same system. Uh, we'll be working with the divers as well as local lake associations. This. Service is available for any other lakes that are eradicating mill foil, so if there are any other um lakes in your towns that might be interested in this, we have a good system in place. And we're happy to help those lake associations.
Thank you. Before we move back, Supervisor Leggett?
Thank you. So Lake Luzern and Moon Lake both get money for that. Would this, would it be eligible for this data tracking as as well?
Yeah, we're actually, so screw, so um, we have money to cover the cost for Screen Lake, but we are offering a service for any lake that's interested. The only, we'll cover the training costs and software costs. The only thing that that would need to be supplied by anybody who's interested in participating. Um, would be just that they need to provide their own devices, which can just be a phone. So uh, that's it, and then just. And then just let us know that you'd like to participate, and we can meet with the divers. We also, in Brant Lake, are going to have citizen participation, citizen participation. So we have an app set up for mill foil observation. So anybody who happens to see mill foil can mark the location and submit it to, for use by the divers.
And was this through the most recent grant with Skroon Lake?
So Skroon Lake, yes, the most recent Skroon Lake grant is covering the cost of phones and some software licenses. But the cost for us to manage this on our end, we're just doing it out of our, you know, as part of our regular.
Okay.
Work for the county. The, the big cost was last year during the development phase of all of this, figuring out how it all was going to work and how to set, you know, how we were going to set it up, how we were going to display the the data, testing it with the divers, testing it with the park commission. We have put all of that work into getting a system that works well. So we're just leveraging that work from last year to expand us to additional lakes. It's not super time consuming on our end, let's set up and running.
Good, thank you. You know, Mr. Chairman, that this data is important for making the future decisions on how much to budget for remediation on these things. We had big discussion about Moon Lake, and we compared to what was pulled out of Skroon Lake and Brant Lake, and you're trying to get to a management level. And, you know, for that, the per pound cost goes up, but you have less pounds. But this will be good data, thank you.
So is a question for me, is the real time data something that the divers would react to then? This season or?
So, so there's two components. So there's a diver, diver survey, which is real time data that, of what they're pulling out while they're harvesting. So that data can be reviewed by anybody who's managing the diving contract. So like Dave at Lake George Park Commission used that extensively in replacement for the hard copy reports that the, the diving contractor was providing last year. Or two years ago, last year, he was able to just go in, search by date, search by crew. You could actually look at the app and see how many buckets were being harvested throughout the course of the day. So, you know, that, that's useful data. At the end of the season, we were able to consolidate all of that into an interactive annual report. And then we have taken all of the previous year's data so that we can see where we're making progress. So we can filter the data by bay. We can filter the data by year so we can see where is mill foil expanding? Where are we making progress and have, you know, pretty much eradicated mill foil? So that's one component of it. The second component that we're implementing this year at the request of some of the lake associations is to have a essentially citizen science component of this, where we have an app, it's free, people can easily access it on their phone via QR code. If they see mill foil, basically, all they're doing is marking the location. They can take a photo of it if they want to. That will get submitted, and the divers can use that. They'll be able to access that, or the person managing the contract will be able to relay that information to the divers.
Thank you.
Sarah, the mill, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the, the mill foil issue. Hasn't been a lot of local reporting done on it, but it appears, appears to be a controversial economic, maybe social question in terms of what's happening recently, in terms of, I think, a contract that's just been about to be leded for mill foil control and there's some questions relative to the safety of the, the process and the safety of Lake George. And there's a group that, you know, they've, within a week, got a thousand signatures on it opposing the, this, the mill foil issue. So it, again, not a lot of local reporting on it, just it's seated on Kib and Lewis on Spectrum News, they're reporting, so.
Yeah, so that's for the, the pesticide removal, which is new, was just recently approved. There's going to be a couple test locations in Lake George. So I believe that was what the controversy about, was about. This particular application is for hand harvesting. So it's for divers who are going down and pulling the plants by hand or who are using a suction device to remove the plants. That's historically how we've been eradicating mill foil for the last thirty plus years, I guess. So, so that is what this is for. It's not for the proper core pesticide. Not pesticide, herbicide.
Jim, go ahead.
I have a question. I've been talking to the various lake organizations about whether they actually see protection of the lake as a potential economic development opportunity. This, to me, is, is an example of that. You're, you're collecting data on the efficacy of invasive species, species management in a way that could be very helpful to other communities. So I'm, and I'm not sure that it's your responsibility to do it, but have we ever thought about how we would make this data available to others? Whether there's a subscription model for it, whether we could teach others how to do it? Not so much for you guys, although you could use some revenue recapture here, but more as a way of continuing to cement the place as a place that protects its water and, and business opportunity develops out of that. Has that conversation ever come up?
Uh, we haven't talked about the business component, but we definitely have had Paradox Lake approached us, interested in this program. And obviously, Paradox Lake is not in Warren County. They are in the Skroon Lake watershed. So we were able to, so we have a technical support contract with Lake Champlain, Lake George Regional Planning Board, where we provide technical, they pay us to provide GIS services. So we were able to arrange to have them pay for us to assist Paradox Lake. The dollar amount is small for us to run this program. Because like I said, last year, we, you know, figured out, got some bolts of how to get it up and running. So I'm a little hesitant to take on too many more lakes, especially because I want to make sure we have all our Warren County lakes covered. But it's certainly a replicable methodology. And.
So this is something that, like, the Finger Lakes could use and other areas within the state that have issues at the lake for whatever, be it mill foil or whatever else they have in terms of invasions.
Yeah, and there are other programs out there who are doing, who are doing similar types of applications. So APEP, who we've met with before we started this program in Lake George. The nice thing about this is that it does not require, it does not require a lot of technical savvy. So it can be done by people who are not super comfortable, you know, using GIS or GPS, which the APEP, their process was a little bit more technically challenging for people who are, are less comfortable in that type of environment.
I'm not sure if it's possible for us to monetize some of the work the county is doing, but it might be some good press for us.
I want to clarify that I'm not telling you, I only want, if that opportunity arises, I'd love for us to figure out how we might be able to help you. Because if we helped fund whatever the expansion resources that we needed in order to prove this, there, it could be an economic development activity of figuring out how to spin these things off in a way that would generate business opportunity and reinforce our reputation as a place where this kind of thing is of value. And I think both of those are potentially, so just keep it in mind.
Okay.
And I will just say in full disclosure, I'm a member of the Paradox Lake Association. We couldn't have had our presentation without you, Sarah, because the map I used is based on one of Sarah's. So we are 100% on board with you.
Thank you. Okay, letterboxing. So we've had some inquiries already this year about what's happening with letterboxing. We will be getting the same program from last year back up and running. We're, we're going to be working on getting those boxes back out over the next couple of weeks. We're swapping out a couple of new bonus boxes. And then we are creating a new letterboxing challenge. So part of the feedback that we got last year from the letterboxing was, in particular, people enjoyed the historic component of the letterbox locations. We got lots of comments about how much people enjoyed learning a little bit of history about the area. So we decided to expand on that theme. Also fits in really nicely with our stories from Open Space Project. And we have asked each of the town historians to pick a location of historic interest in their community. We are going to put a letterbox in each one of those communities. And then we're going to be working with Cliff and Redfield Interactive, who I think you met when they came and gave a presentation in the fall. They'll be writing an article about each location. We'll be publishing that on our website. We're also hoping to do a video where we meet up with each historian in that location, edit that into a nice little short promo video to go along with this, making a new passport, new website, all of that. So we're, we're working on that. We're hoping to have that released early this summer.
So how many participants did we have last year, do you know?
We had about four thousand participants, which was shocking.
For the first year?
Yeah, so we're, we, that was about, I would say, four hundred times what we were expecting. Thanks to tourism for helping fund the many reprints of the passport that we had to do last year.
So, so one of your goals is to at least double that this year?
We'll see, yeah, I don't know what to expect, but definitely it's been a very popular program.
Supervisor Leggett.
And who wrote all of the poems?
I wrote most of them. We had a few contributors for some of them, but I have to get myself in the rhyming mindset.
Got a talent there for it.
I don't know, I would go that far. Not going to quit my day job.
Please don't.
Okay, so another exciting thing that if you visit us in our office, you'll see sitting on a giant cart is new panels for all of the kiosks in the First Wilderness Communities. So these will hopefully be being installed over the course of the next month. We have the Town Overview Panel, which are the same panels that Sidekit created that were installed at the visitor center in Lake George. We have a new orientation panel. So one of the reasons that we're replacing these panels is because they're very centered on Saratoga North Creek Railroad, obviously. No longer in business, so we needed to replace the panels. So we basically just have an orientation for the First Wilderness Corridor panel. And then we have a new map for each town that will go on the third side, and then the fourth side will be a bulletin board where, where community members can post things. So those will, should be appearing soon, keep your eyes open. You may have seen, we just released a new Trail Reporter application. So again, this is a, you know, citizen participation app. It can be accessed via a URL or via the QR code. We're just asking for assistance from the public in reporting trail maintenance and hazards. So we are providing this information as it gets submitted to the trail maintainers. So Lake George Land Conservancy, DEC, Town of Queensberry, County DPW, all various different entities who are responsible for maintaining trails. So we just released this last week. Don sent out a press release, we got a couple articles and various different, you know, PostStar, Channel 10. And we've had around twenty submissions so far just over this past weekend. So we'll see, hopefully it'll be a nice service for our citizens and for the people responsible for the trails. GPS enabled, so they're able to mark the exact location of the issue and take photos. Brant Lake and Chester Challenges. So for those of you not aware, the Brant Lake has been working on a sister challenge to the Chester Challenge, has five trails. They have that cool patch that's been designed. We're creating the website for them. We're doing all of the trail mapping for them. We'll have a website with an online application for finishers. And then also as part of our stories from Open Space Project, we'll have detailed trip reports for each one of the hikes. And we are in conjunction with this updating, creating a new website for the Chester Challenge so that it will look similar to the Brant Lake Challenge. We'll have the two linked to each other. So hopefully these, this will be a, both a great new hiking challenge for our area and then an easier to use interface for accessing trail information. And then a few other projects that we're working on. The city of Glens Falls has to redistrict their wards, so we're assisting with that project. We're continuing our very large project of moving all of DPW's infrastructure data into GIS, which I think will be fantastic. Amanda just made a storm reporter app for Office of Emergency Services so that citizens, towns can submit reports of storm damage. We're continuing with our Stories from Open Space Project. If you haven't visited the website, I'd encourage you to do that. This Thursday, we'll be continuing our civic conversations with an interview with Supervisor Hogan. So we're looking forward to that, 2:00 PM on Thursday. We're working on dashboards, interactive dashboards for all of the communities within the Lake Champlain, Lake George Regional Planning Board with demographic information on how economic factors, housing, community profiles. We're working on Long Path North Project, which is late, I won't talk about it unless there's questions. As Ethan mentioned, we're doing a build out analysis. We're working with a class of GIS students at Skidmore, which has been quite an experience for the town of Warrensburg. We're also happy to do build out analyses in our office for any other towns who are interested. And then we are working on continuing our work on getting and organizing and updating public interface for all of our GIS applications and data and maps and all of that.
Supervisor Leggett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's a build out analysis?
So basically, a build out analysis is figuring out how many housing units could be built in a community given physical constraints. So, you know, wetlands, water bodies, steep slopes, and then given, given current zoning regulations. So, you know, if it's in this zone, you need forty-two acres per unit. If it's in this zone, you need, so we're figuring out exactly how many housing units could be built and where they could go in each community. That's interesting. We, we started with the town of Warrensburg because they're working on their comprehensive plan and, you know, had been looking to expand the hamlet. But we're happy to do that analysis for.
And this is actually really important part of the housing conversation countywide. So basically, as we work out the methodology for doing a build out analysis, you know, this is all done in a model in GIS, right? So because Sarah has been so diligent with keeping a really robust database of GIS information, we're going to be able to build the model and then plug in the information. And then hopefully, we'll be able to bring this to scale and do it for other municipalities. The really cool part about this is, as Sarah mentioned, it's like, we're not going to necessarily change some of the physical constraints unless we were to say something like, add sewer infrastructure in which we can increase density. But the regulatory constraints, we do have control over. So if you looked in a lot of these hamlet areas or other downtown areas, you'd look at, say, okay, under this scenario, it's our current land use regulations, we'd be allowed X number of dwellings per acre. So then you say, okay, you know, we think our demand is going to be for this much housing, you know? Is this, you know, how are we going to do this? So then you start looking at your zoning regulations, and you say, okay, if we change our lot coverage, if we change, you know, if we reduce our off-street parking minimums, if we allow greater height, all of a sudden, you can plug these variables into this GIS model, and then you could say, oh, look at this, with this, this tweak to our land use regulations, we could conceivably host this much more density in our communities. So this is going to be pretty important. Because if, you know, we say, oh, we don't have enough land to do this, we just might, I just might have to change some of the. Because if, you know, we say, oh, we don't have enough land to do this, we just might, I just might have to change some of the variables.
Thanks. So Sarah, with the, the Chester and Horkin Challenge, are you holding the wagers between our two supervisors? Who's going to get the most? Now, in all seriousness, I, I think you've demonstrated to so many people the value of GIS. And I haven't asked you this before, so if I'm putting you on the spot, you don't have to have an answer right away. But what should we be doing in addition to what we're doing today, based on what's happening with the economic climate and everything else? So if you had a wish list.
For, for what we should be doing with GIS or just in general?
Well, let's just stick with GIS for right now. I'll plan, we could talk about in general.
So, so I guess I would love more time first and foremost, that would be my, my top wish. But barring, you know, moving into the office. One thing that I think would be really beneficial that I would like to, to, to have happen is to I guess it's probably been close to 20 years ago at this point. I, when I first started working here at the county, I met with every department and talked with them about what their needs were. It kind of explained what can be done with GIS and, and examined their needs. And then we tried to implement some of those projects, you know, over the subsequent years. So I think that it's really time to update that again. I think one thing that we saw with COVID, I personally saw was that we were not, we were not taking advantage of the opportunity to use GIS to manage the COVID data. I mean, we did to some extent on the hub, but it could have just been so much more efficiently done. And I think, you know, we're working with D P W to move in that direction to get all of their data into GIS, which just, the great thing about GIS is that it just improves efficiency so much. There's so many opportunities to both improve efficiency of, of routine work in a large number of departments, as well as provide better public access to that data. So I feel like it's twofold. We have a great opportunity to, to share a lot of this data publicly, which I think is part of our mission and important part of our mission and reduce workload for a lot of departments. So I'd like to be able to update that needs assessment and then prioritize where it makes sense to focus our efforts in assisting other departments.
That was well said, and I think you just put the committee on notice for a proposal coming, right? And personnel, right? We need to get some more help because I, I truly believe that there's significant value in what you guys have done. So I'm going to open it up. Any other discussions?
Quick question. Quickly kind of looked at the capital improvement projects for the city of Glens Falls. And it just, it looks like it's 16, 17, 18 million dollars, whatever the number is. But the, the, it'd be nice if we could kind of tie that number to as, as those dollars kind of stream through our economy, you know, what does it mean in terms of the operation, what does it mean in terms of other type pluses and advantages to our community? But it's a 17, 18 million dollars. It's a, that's a lot of dinero, kind of chunkling through in terms of capital improvement. So just don't know, I, I think there's some value in trying to put a, put, put maybe a job creation or, or an economic factor on, on that issue.
Well, to the extent that we want to do that, if we can be helpful. Certainly provided us enormous support. We, we more than owe you.
One, one observation on the, the discussion relative to, to land, okay? And, and the, what do we do with the city of Glens Falls where we, we really don't have any available land? I guess we're, 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 we're out of the mix, I guess, and to, to a great extent, I guess, huh?
As far as the build out analysis. Yes, so.
There's, there's, I mean, there's way, I mean, basically, you know, you would, you would be able to evaluate the zoning for, you know, what's available there. And you sort of compare that against what residents' vision for the future is. Basically, if this, you know, updated comprehensive plan, update the zoning regulations for the city to reflect, you know, the desires, you know, this new revelation we have about housing demand. It's a process, but yeah, there, you could certainly put the city of Glens Falls, do a build out analysis in the city. You could evaluate underutilized parcels, stuff that might be zoned for industrial, which is no longer attractive for the industrial industries of yesteryear, like canal side access or water power access, which we took for granted. Now that stuff is probably by exit 18 and you could rezone industrial things for other, you know, mixed use development or something.
Yeah, I would agree with you. Both Prines Island and, and what is now known as Tech Meadows have the opportunity to at least evaluate, be evaluated in terms of what their potential would be for mixed use or some kind of housing development. I think the other thing is to look at, you, you know, that's our most urban part of the county. But i- if we were to make changes in density, just to consider them in some of our regulations and zoning in the city, what would the capacity potential be for that? So that what if analysis would be valuable, because as part of your housing study, understanding what the city can contribute is a big part of what the overall answer is for the county at large.
Yeah. And it's, and it's good too. It's like for places like Queensberry and Glens Falls, like we have the infrastructure for the most part. We have the roadways, we have the wastewater systems. It's like building in these areas will be the most efficient from municipal finance standpoint, right? We're not going to have to bond for a bunch of new infrastructure. We can put this in the already established growth areas. And it's also attractive to, you know, businesses and new residents to be around population centers.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Lehman, any public comment? It's his birthday, right?
I guess he's going to get cupcakes somewhere. I don't know. But he did say there was no comment.
Okay, thank you.
Before he left.
Before he left. So unless there's other business before this committee, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Supervisor Stroud.
Oh, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Well, we just had a, a little bitty discussion on zoning. I just want to add, you have to be very careful when you're going to take away zoning that is for commercial. Again, maybe you had a look at it, if it's heavy industrial, you can go to light industrial. But you have to be very careful in converting that to housing. If you convert it to housing, it's forever gone for industrial development or commercial development. And if you ever looked at Ohio State University's study that was done on the cost of community services, COCS, you'll find out that for every resident you put in, it ends up costing everybody more. Now for every commercial or light industrial or even heavy industrial, if you have the chance to do that, you are actually going to get money back because they don't usually consume, consume the amount of tax dollars that they give to the, to the total pool. So take a look at Ohio State University's cost of community services and, and not be so quick to rezone a piece of property from a commercial or industrial to a residential. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Supervisor Stroud. Any other questions, comments, motion to adjourn? Supervisor Leggett, Supervisor McDevitt on the second, all those in.